Hello, good evening. Welcome to the August 28th, 2019 School Committee Meeting. Welcome back, everybody. Nice to see you all. Everybody is here, Tristan, with the exception of Steve York. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have some consent agenda items. We'll start with the approval of minutes from June 12th, 2019, and June 26th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns.
I have one amendment to the minutes for June 12th. Sorry, I didn't see this early enough. Under the pack presentation, it's number nine C. Lisa Costantio's name is misspelled. There's no N in front of it. Costantio, not Costantio. And that's in the first sentence, the first line. There's also one third from the bottom.
Thank you.
So with those two amendments, I'll move to approve the minutes.
All right. So Mr. Ragsdale seconded. All in favor? And that is unanimous? Mrs. Newhouse? Yeah, okay. It's unanimous. Thank you. We have some warrants. I will take them in a couple of sections. So we'll start with G 439, G 440, 441, 442, 443, 400 and 401. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That's unanimous. R 245, 246, 247, R 200, 201, and 202. Do I have a motion? Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. L 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97. And then L 01, 02, 03, 04, 05, and 06. Do I have a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. FS 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, and FS 01. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have payroll ending 7/319, 7/1719, 7/3119, 8/1419, and 8/2819. Do I have a motion? Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have CB 27, 28, and 29. Motion, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? Everyone, except for Mrs. Burns, abstention. We have CFO 1 and CFO 2. Do I have a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. And finally, ooh, this is a lot. Sped 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, and then sped 01. Do I have a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? And that's two abstentions, Mrs. Newhouse and Mrs. Burns. Thank you. That's our first meeting back from the summer, so thank you. All right. And that brings us to our superintendent's report. You'll notice we have some timestamps. How are we doing? Doing very well. Look at that.
I will see what I can do. Well, thank you, everyone. Good evening and Happy New Year. It is great to be back and it's great to see you all as we get this 2019-20 school year off to a start. A couple of just opening of school notes to share with you. By all accounts, things got off to a terrific start yesterday in the district. As you know, we had a half-day early release, but our buildings were ready. And between myself and members of our central office team, had the chance to visit all of the schools that were opening. As you know, our early childhood centers don't yet have students in them. But by all accounts, aside from the typical beginning of the year hiccups here and there, a great thanks goes to our school leaders collectively as a team and all of the central office staff for helping make sure that things were ready to go. Again, to our facilities department. Buildings looked great. Staff were geared up and ready to go. So I think by all accounts, as we bring the second day to a close, off to a very good start. Just some notes since our summer recess that I thought I would take a few moments to provide you with an update on. The district leadership team, which as you know, or hopefully you'll know, consists of both our building leaders as well as our central office leaders, had a two-day retreat back at the end of July, July 30th and 31st. An opportunity to really take stock of where we are going as a district over the coming year. A chance to really dig in as well to talk an awful lot about our strategic plan and the specific work that is ahead of us, which was really a focal point for that. Somewhat similarly, the focal point for Monday, August 19th, was the theme for our extended leadership team summer meeting. That included the district leadership team, as well as all of those that serve in a leadership capacity throughout our district, assistant principals, curriculum team leaders, and the like. So that was a much larger group. But three great and very, I think, very beneficial days to get us off to, again, a good, great start. On the note of strategic plan, it's not an agenda item this evening, but I did want you to know that it's my intention to bring the plan to you for an updated view at your next meeting on September the 11th. Of course, you approved the plan in the sense of the vision and values and overall strategic objectives. Work has since ensued around sort of fine-tuning what the next action steps look like, and I want to bring that back to you again. That was a theme of really those three days of work collectively together. And so I think it's important that you, as a school committee and the community at large, see where we're planning and the thinking to go as we get this year underway. The half-day today, I'm sorry, yesterday, seemed to go, again, by all accounts, quite well. Again, with your support of a calendar, you know that we had an early release day yesterday with the primary intention being to provide time for our instructional staff to receive the full complement of plans for all of our students, special education, 504, and the like, a little bit more intensive plans. Things seem to go well. It was a large endeavor, to be sure. Thank you to Alice and to LeAnn and our student services department for their work in ensuring that the plans and the information was out there for our staff. And thank you again to the school committee for your support for that in our calendar. I would suggest that, you know, the thought of an early release day on the first day is something that at some point, perhaps we might talk further about as we get to thinking about the calendar for next year. Love to have any feedback as well that you may have heard from community members in terms of how that felt and such getting forward. We know some other districts do it, but not everyone. But it's something that I think perhaps we could talk further about. And then finally, the high school gym floor, just to note, work has begun, as you know. That was a topic of some conversation at the town level in terms of replacing the floor. If you've been by there, you would see it, but if you haven't, you might not know that it's under construction. Work has more than begun in terms of removing the old floor and steps towards installing the new. We're hopeful and anticipating a completion date of sometime in October. And so the athletic department is working around this specifically for volleyball as the affected sport. Most of the physical education classes, of course, at this time of the year would be outside anyway, as I understand it. So to just give you an update on that. And then the final piece of opening school, also a good news report. We did just get word from the Department of Elementary and Second Education around our coordinated program review. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Regan just to share and put a final footnote, if you will, on this.
Yeah, so we, two days ago, submitted the last element, last batch of evidence up for Civil Rights Indicator 24, which is bias in the curriculum. There were just a couple of documents that needed to be done after a meeting with the high school staff. So I had to go to each building last year and do presentations, and I was unable to schedule the high school. So they pushed out our deadline until October 2nd. So we met that deadline by five weeks, which is good. And we received an email early this morning from them, basically closing the books and saying that that particular review is over, which is good. So now we get ready for the next one that is right around the corner, I'm sure.
Good news indeed. So thank you. And that's it for my report, unless members of the committee have any questions.
Included in your, in the packet was some of the just general work that's been done over the summer in some of the schools, some of which are AC replacements. Do you have a number as to how many were replaced? And if there were more slated for next year? Or I know that at the start of last year, the heat was unbearable, but I just, I guess, three questions rolled up until one statement. I just didn't know what information you had at this juncture and what your thoughts are about going forward.
So if I may, I'll just go somewhat out of order to item C. With the, in your packet is, is an overview, rather, sorry, of the summer work that was tackled and completed by both our Department of Public Works and public buildings projects, and of which is noted in there, some air conditioner replacements. So I don't have an exact number right now. I do know that those that were identified as not functioning, my understanding, I can think of one or two at the Wildwood as an example. There was no, I think it's important to note that there were no, to my knowledge, were no new air conditioning units installed in any of our buildings or classrooms in the wake of that heat issue last year. But those that we do have functioning, and certainly those that are servicing classrooms where we might have summer programs, those can imagine are priority. I'm not sure, Mr. Reguero, if you had anything, but...
Yeah, that's true. Public buildings service many of the air conditioning units that we currently have. And if some weren't functioning, we would replace them. But it's a school budgetary item, the replacement of the air conditioner. So I know the butt well in the Wildwood, we had an air conditioner, it was in the budget. Replaced at both of those schools.
Oh, okay. Thank you then, actually. There's another...
But we can, if you'd like, we can certainly try and get more of a concrete number.
Well, if these replacements occurred at the butt well in Wildwood? Or were they just kind of scattered throughout the...
Yeah, well, those two in particular within the budget. We had a budgetary item for replacement of the air conditioners at the butt well in the Wildwood. And other ones that came up, you know, if we had to, if it was imperative that we replace the air conditioner if it wasn't working, we did. Or it was serviced.
Yeah, I guess if, you know, if there is more than we, the more we replaced this year that was outside of the scope of what we anticipated budgetarily, I guess I'd be just curious as to what that would be. It's not a priority, but some juncture, just to monitor that purchase, those purchases. I'd appear.
If I may, just, sorry, I said I did, that was it for my opening report. But I forgot to mention one item for the committee, and that is thinking ahead to next meeting on September the 11th. What we have tentatively scheduled is the invitation of new staff, which is rather customary, as I understand it, in the district, inviting new staff here to be introduced. In the past, my understanding is that meeting has typically started at 6:30. So it's a regular school committee meeting, but it's at 6:30. So I guess just to check if we could on that in terms of your respective availability and if that's a time that you'd like to commit to, or if you'd like to consider adjusting that time start.
Thoughts on that? You're okay? Fine, fine? Okay, then that's fine. We can do that for the 11th. Thank you. And then, oh, okay. I was gonna say, I'm confused. Okay, so you are going to be. Thank you. Okay, sorry.
Item 4B, Student Support Services Reorganization. So the thinking to include it under the superintendent's report as opposed to new business, because it's not, it's not really new business at all. But it does certainly seem timely as we start this year. Just to spend a couple of minutes highlighting, highlighting one of the things that is indeed a change for us this coming year. In your packet, for those members of the community who might be interested in a little bit additional information, there's Agenda Item 4B, Office of Student Support Services Reorganization. And so just very briefly here, I'd just like to take the opportunity to spotlight sort of what this has meant. And again, this comes about through the repurposing or reorganization of the special education curriculum team leader and what this has also meant on a larger level for the department. So as you'll recall, during the budget process last year, in our planning for this year, you ultimately proved the recommendation to reorganize our Department of Student Support Services. We've talked an awful lot, and I believe wholeheartedly that this department is a key aspect of any school district's operations, and certainly Wilmington is no different. It is easy to understand why, but it's important to note that it's wide. The average staff person might not have awareness of how just broad this department is, but it consumes an awful lot of our operating budget. It supports the needs of an awful lot of our students, and so it's very critical. And it is far deeper than just special education. I know I'll become a broken record probably stating that, but it's so true. And I know many of you certainly know about that. So it was a full-time administrator to serve in the role of coordinator of special education. And a little bit later this evening, introduced to you, LeAnn. I know many of you know her, but we're so fortunate to have her. And again, through your support in the creation of this position. And so this was really an important opportunity, not just to me, to add a position of full-time administration, but to think a little bit differently about how we structure the department. So Office of Student Support Services is how, in this district, we refer to it as. It's a spectrum. I think that's the appropriate way to think about it. And there on the slide, and as noted in the memo, is all of the various services that fall under the umbrella, if you will, that are education-related. Again, special education's noted, but as you can see, there are so many, so many more aspects that touch the lives each and every day here in our district of so many, so many students. When you roll together the collective operating budget, round figure, it is approximately $20 million. When you tie in all of the tuitions, staffing, and such under this department. So it is a massive aspect of our organization. So sort of visually, a little bit of a different way to look at this. One of the changes that, in working closely with Alice and sort of thinking through what would make the most sense, one change that really, in addition to the, in addition to the creation of the special education administrative position or coordinator position, is the shift of nursing services. Nursing services, at least recently, was reporting to Dr. Regan and his office. It seemed to me like that would make a whole lot more sense to integrate that into Student Support Services. And with that, so Ms. Crowe and her respective department has shifted there. Under the umbrella of Student Support Services, I think this provides a more holistic sort of way of thinking about the overall coordination of the various services that fall under the department. In the memo, and just highlighted here, this is the same view, the next few slides, just provides a brief overview of the programs and services that what now is three coordinators that we have. So as you know, we have, we had previously, recently, the addition or creation of the coordinator of behavioral health, which is Christine Murray. We now have the coordinator of special education, which I'll get to in a moment. And then a slight change in the title from director to coordinator of nursing services. So we have three coordinators now, respectively, reporting to the director of Student Support Services. And you can see here just a quick, broad overview of the respective services that fall to Christine Murray, who's currently in this role, coordinator of behavioral health. And then the individuals, or the roles, rather, that Ms. Murray is helping to support in terms of supervision and evaluation. Sort of a similar view, but this is the coordinator of special education. And you can see the programs and services there throughout the district that Seibert will help support. And then respectively, the supervision and evaluation of our staff that are spread throughout the district. And then finally, coordinator of nursing services. It's a little bit more straightforward, probably, in the thinking, but there's an awful lot more than just Ms. Crowe's liaison with our nurses, but an awful lot of other facets of our operation that we ask her to serve to support. Visually, just a sort of an organizational chart specifically of Student Support Services. Tried to capture what this looks like from an organizational standpoint. So you can see the director of Student Support Services, Alice, of course, and then the three coordinators, who I just briefly spoke about. And then the programs or services that fall, fall under them respectively. So again, just meant to provide the school committee and then the community with a little bit of a broader view of what this looks like. From the day-to-day operations, for our average staff member, it might not feel terribly different. But in our work with our school leaders, specifically around the addition of special education coordinator, there's some differences that we've been spending some time talking about in terms of what that can look like from a capacity standpoint. So really just meant to be informational, but I'm very happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I have one quick question. Under the coordinator of behavioral health slide and the positions that kind of report under that, the last two bullets listed that there are six FTE adjustment counselors and seven FTE school counselors. And kind of jumping forward a little bit to something later in the agenda, are adjustment counselors still going to retain that title? Or are they also being folded into school counselors along with guidance counselors?
I think, if I may, can we just hold on that question until that later presentation? If that's all right? We actually, I did have a conversation earlier, and I know one or two other members had that same question. So if we could, if we could just hold off to that later presentation.
Any other questions? The sun keeps coming out.
I was going to say. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to old business. And we have one item, approval of 2019-2020 school committee protocols. And I'm gonna pass that over to Mr. Ragsdale.
All right. So at the June 26th meeting, our retreat at the beginning of the summer last year, we discussed the operating protocols that we had approved for the 2018-19 school year and talked about a few changes that we might make for the 19-20 school year. And so I just want to go over the few things that are new. They're mostly unchanged, but a couple of changes. So I'll point out what those are. So the first, the first change is actually a small change that we didn't discuss, but in the very first sentence, essentially sort of the prologue, "As members of the Wilmington School Committee, we agree to the following operating protocols." There used to be a sort of a little bit more to that sentence than more or less just said the exact same thing again, that we agree to do this. Talked about, "We commit to follow them in all of our, in conduct of our business." And when I read it a second time, it seemed like that's just saying the same thing twice, that we're gonna do what we lay out in the rest of this document. So I just shortened that to make that a little bit simpler. The roles are exactly the same, so no changes in that section. In the communication section, this is one of the areas that we talked about. So there is a new bullet in the communication section, which is the second bullet from the bottom, which I'll just read here. "If a resident contacts the entire committee about a concern, the chair will generally send a response on behalf of the committee. Members may also respond individually, but should make clear that they are responding in their individual capacity and not on behalf of the whole committee." And that was what we had discussed at the June 26th meeting, about when, you know, we sort of receive as a whole some communication from residents. And to what extent do we want our communication to be on an individual basis for members versus a response from the chair? And so, and that, that second part of that they responding individually, but should make clear that they're responding in their individual capacity, it, I think, also goes a little bit beyond just when we're all emailed, because the truth is that that would be true in any circumstance when we're communicating individually with residents. But I think that it was fine to capture that in here, and I didn't think it needed a separate bullet just for that other circumstance. But that's, that is the new bullet based on the discussion that we had in June. No change to the open meeting law and executive session section. So that's exactly the same. And then two changes in the meeting section. So the first is in the second bullet. So this is basically about the agendas, how the agendas are formed. So the previous version, there was a slightly different first sentence that said the chairperson and superintendent are responsible for creating the agenda. And so that's, I slightly reworked that a little bit. The chairperson and vice chair will collaborate with the superintendent to create the agenda for each meeting. The second sentence is exactly the same. That's what we had there last year. And then based on our discussion from June 26th, I added another sentence here. "Any school committee member may provide input on the agenda and may request that an item be placed on the agenda." Because we had discussed that we wanted everyone on the committee to feel some ownership of the agenda and not that it was something that other people take care of and that as individual members, we don't contribute to or can't request items for. So there's another sentence to reflect that. And the only other change is in the following bullet, which has to do with the procedures. The sentence used to read, "That school committee meetings will be conducted by the chairperson according to Robert's Rules of Order." But when I was thinking about how we actually conduct our meetings, even though for the most part, of course, we do that with seconds and motions and having the chair recognize people for speaking, there are times that we also have slightly more free-flowing discussions where people will speak directly to each other. And it seemed that although, for the most part, we do use Robert's rules, that we could give ourselves the discretion to also be a little bit more informal if the circumstances seemed appropriate for that. And of course, at the discretion of the chair. So if you want to hold the meetings with an iron fist according to Robert's rules, you can still do that. So those are the changes, and I'm happy to hear any questions or discussion.
Mrs. Burns?
Actually, the only aspect that I have to disagree with respectfully, because I gotta tell you, thank you for your wordsmithing, because I think you did a wonderful job. But I think the way, Robert's Rules of Order is one of the oldest parliamentary procedures that is followed by most boards in this country. And what I don't care for with the however piece is that I think we should always follow Robert's rules. But I do think it's to the discretion of the chair as to how formal or informal. I mean, we don't have to go back to the parliamentary language of, you know, although I do find myself saying it, point of order and things of that sort. But I think it sets an expectation with regards to running a well-run meeting where everybody has an opportunity to speak, given a set amount of time. And I think with the way it's written here, it's, I mean, that's always to the discretion of the chair, whomever that chair may be. And we have to think also forward as to future chairs and future school committee makeup. You want to make sure there's a balanced parliamentary process. And the way it's written in this aspect almost seems that while we're, someone, should they choose, want to forego Robert's rules and come up with their own way of running their meetings, I think it can be very problematic and could potentially contribute to a very dysfunctional, not speaking with regards to the board we presently have, but I think it could really compromise the effectiveness and efficiency of future boards. Not to say that they can't, you know, every year we do revise this, but I just think it's, it opens up a unhealthy can of worms, unhealthy can of worms. And I would just as soon give that responsibility, which is fully the chair's responsibility, as to how they want to run the meeting, whether it be formal or informal in that sense, that discretion as opposed to it being agreed by the board. Because we vote on the chair to run the meetings and, you know, and thus far, we've been, it's been great that the commentary with any chair that we've had is, this is how I'd like to do this, if anybody has any questions, you know, looking for feedback. So I don't think that however line is really necessary. That's kind of my position. And I think I would have to, I'd hate to vote against this piece, but for that line, but I will, because that's how I interpret that line. It's, and it's, you know, vagueness. And the other aspect that I just wanted to point out too, that I would maybe better off with some additional clarification, is with regards to the last bullet on that page. It's where it starts, "School committee members will conduct themselves." There's a subsequent second bullet, "Members recognize that there should be no surprises during meetings," which I think goes without question. "And will send questions to the superintendent in advance so that the superintendent is prepared to respond." I wholeheartedly agree to that line, but there are aspects at times when things do come up last minute without opportunity. I try to, you know, I know, it happens with me. I try to catch Dr. Brand right prior to the meeting. It's really not always the best, but sometimes certain things do come up where I think, where I need to ask or I need to bring it forth at a meeting for discussion. Not to, it's not by any means to catch any of the superintendent or any of the district leaders at a disadvantage. But I just, I just, I guess I'm kind of looking for clarification in those small amounts of times when something like that happens. Is there, is there that flexibility? I mean, that's, I mean, I think best practice is as is written, but in those events when certain things may come up last minute, that may contribute to the conversation? I just...
Sure. Well, and I think we've all, at the retreat, we did talk about that. Like, we try our best to think, but we don't always think of every question ahead of time. And of course, as people are presenting, we may think of something, and people should feel free to always then ask those questions. I wonder if adding when possible might just fix that a little bit?
Whenever possible, maybe?
So should be no surprises, and will send questions to the superintendent in advance when possible?
Whenever possible.
Whenever possible, if possible? So that the superintendent is prepared to respond.
I just think, I think with, if possible, because I think that's best practice that I think we should all follow. So maybe whenever, I don't know what the, what your thoughts are, Dave?
I mean, surprises should be avoided. I believe surprises should, should be avoided. Something, I mean, I know what you're saying because the, it makes it sound as though, oh, if you say something that wasn't anticipated during the meeting, you violated the protocol in some way because, wait, I didn't know that was going to come. It's like, well, for all the reasons you mentioned, sometimes you just think of something, there's not time before a meeting. And that's not the intention.
Right.
So.
You think whenever possible might be a-
Okay. So I think we can, well, maybe we'll wordsmith that and you can, maybe you and Mr. Ragsdale can wordsmith it a little bit before the next meeting. We'll bring it back one more time.
Sorry.
Does anybody have any thoughts on the other point about the Robert's Rules? Anybody else want to talk about that or? Mr. Smaha?
I'll say that I hadn't thought about it the way you had just presented it as putting something in writing and then going forward. It could open, you know, open up, you know, who knows what, you know, depending on the makeup of future school committees. And if people decide to just keep that, if that doesn't get, ever get taken out, you know, it, it could be, you know, it could be a difficult situation. So I, I, I think I tend to agree with Mrs. Burns on, on taking that part out.
I don't disagree. I think that, that some of this may have, I don't remember discussing this one in particular on the 26th, but I, I do remember that particular retreat was informal. And so when we have those sorts of meetings where we're just generating questions and talking with one another about how certain things are going, or say we have MASC come and do something with us about setting goals, and then it does tend to take on something a little bit more informal. I think that's where it stemmed from. Like could we have, does everyone, does everything have to filter back through the chair at those times? So if we inserted this, it would give a little bit of freedom to make those changes when possible. But I'm not opposed to pulling it out either if others would rather not see that there. So it would just read, "School committee meetings will generally be conducted by the chairperson according to Robert's Rules of Order," period. I mean, I'm fine with that too. Thoughts, Mr. Ragsdale?
I'm not attached to the, to the addition to the addition, so. Not going to hurt my feelings. I mean, the, you know, having, having, you know, procedures and rules in place is generally considered as a safeguard precisely for when things can potentially get in a bad place. And then you have Robert's Rules or some other system to fall back on that ensures that things stay in control. And I don't think we have, you know, too much worry or concern, concern about that. But I'm fine with just keeping it as it is if, if other people are happy with that.
Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So we'll just strike that from however. Tristan, do you have that? I'm crossing it out, but I'll send it to. And then we will bring this back on September 11th and then hopefully then we'll, we'll sign. So we won't sign this one, sorry. She's always prepared. She's like, this is the one for signatures. I'm like, okay. And then I pass it back. I'm like, not yet. All right. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, for all your work on this from the, from the get-go. We really do appreciate it. All right. That brings us to new business. And that is letter A, appointment of superintendent to SEEM Board for 2019-2020. You have a handout in your folder. Do you want me to read this beginning part or just go right to the recommended motion?
I can just set it up if you'd like.
Sure.
So yes, in your, in your packet, an overview and perhaps some of you I know are familiar, but maybe those that are newer to the committee, SEEM is the collaborative that we belong to. And in accordance with their necessary obligations for member districts, as a school committee, you do need to annually appoint the superintendent to their respective board of directors. The information in the packet notes a variety of services that as a member we take advantage of. It notes the annual membership fee. And then finally, well, not finally, but the number, the member districts that we are partnered with, and you can see the list there, and then the, the oversight, the powers, duties and such of the board. So this is an annual item, but it does require a vote, a motion and then a vote.
Any discussion? Nope. All right. I'll read the recommended motion. Move to appoint Superintendent Glenn Brand to the SEEM Board and Directors for the 2019-2020 school year. Wait a second, Mr. Fenely? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. And this is you.
Great. Thank you. Item 6B under new business, introduction of new administrators. We are extremely fortunate here in Wilmington to be able to welcome a number of terrific folks, some that didn't have to travel too far to these new positions, but others that have joined, have joined Wilmington Public Schools from a little bit farther field. And it just seemed appropriate to take this opportunity to introduce them to you as the school committee and of course, our community as well too. And so in your packet, there is a, a listing of the respective folks that I'll just briefly introduce this evening and, and make mention of. Most are here. I don't think everyone, but most are here. So we'll start with Sheila Burke, interim assistant principal at the Woburn Street School after serving as a classroom teacher at the North Intermediate School for over a decade, 11 years. Ms. Burke will now serve as the interim assistant principal to support Ms. Sullivan at the Woburn Street School. And Sheila is here this evening. We're so pleased that she has decided to take on this position of added responsibility. And if you want to say hello, you don't have to.
I'm thrilled to be transitioning to this role and the timing is absolutely perfect. And I hope that it turns into something more permanent as this time goes on. I'm really thrilled and it's been wonderful since July 1st and I haven't stopped smiling. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. Next, Leanne Ebert. She, she is the coordinator. I mentioned her earlier, of course. As you know, the coordinator of special education. Most recently, she served as many I think are aware as our curriculum team leader for special education in the district, and that was specifically for grades six through 12. Prior to her role, she served for a number of years as special education teacher at the Wilmington Middle School, which is a terrific asset certainly to have that experience as well. And she has taught in a variety of capacities as well as a special education teacher, both here in the district and in other locations. And so we're thrilled to have her continue in a position of, at a responsibility and to help support the work of the department. She, I don't know if you'd say she moved up. She moved over from the high school where she is now at the Wildwood with the department. So Leanne, welcome and it's great to have you. Ken Lord, I know you've met, but Ken is here with us, but I know, I do know that for those of you that were here at the time of his appointment, he, he comes to us from a couple of different districts. Most recently, the Marblehead Public Schools, 25 years of public education experience, serving a variety of roles, most specifically in educational technology. He also has just been a great addition in, in two short months, has dug in, rolled up the sleeves, whatever, whatever metaphor you want to use in terms of his additional support that he's provided for so many that are in this room as well as beyond. So we welcome Ken and thank him for his contributions already thus far. Alexander Phillips, middle school principal. Alex is with us this evening. He has, he comes to us from the Chicago Public Schools, 20 years of public education experience at the elementary, middle and high school level in both Massachusetts as well as Illinois. He served as a classroom teacher with both, within both general and special education settings and 14 years of administrative experience in a variety of roles. We are pleased to be able to welcome him here to Wilmington. And Alex, thank you for being here. Did you want to say a word or two?
I'll say just a quick thing. I'm just very profoundly grateful for this opportunity and I will share one small story. When I come home at night recently, my wife said to me, you come home so profoundly happy these days. And so thank you for myself, but also thank you for my family because they're enjoying a different me at home. So I'm very grateful and it's been a wonderful experience. So thanks.
Thank you, Alex. Suzanne Sullivan, who is our new principal at the Woburn Street School. She has over 30 years of public education experience at the elementary level. Having served in a variety of communities throughout the Commonwealth, she holds certainly experiences both an administrator and a classroom teacher. And she has come to us most recently from Bill Ricka and she, and obviously Ms. Burke are the new team for this year at Woburn Street. We're so pleased to have her. Suzanne, welcome.
Thank you.
And Kevin Welch, I don't think Kevin's here. Certainly a name that you all know quite well, but I just wanted to note that Mr. Welch has taken on the interim assistant principalship position at the Shawshin Elementary School. We're so pleased to have his leadership continue here in the district, serving the students and the community of Wilmington. You know, obviously him very well from his experience in time at the middle school. And so we're so very fortunate to have Mr. Welch continuing in a, in a role as well too. So it is a great team, I can tell you, having spent time with them over the summer days that I mentioned to you. And I'm looking forward to their individual and collective contributions over the year. So thank you to everyone for being here.
Excellent. The next item, we have athletic summer camps. And I think Mr. Gergio is going to give us the update.
Thank you. This past summer, we ran our summer athletic camps, the 11th year, running the camps. Again, a huge success. Had over 519 children participate. It's just a great, great program that's run. And, you know, Mr. Harrison, Tim Alberts, all the coaches and assistants did a great job to keep the kids engaged and having fun. And it's really, it's really a nice program. And hopefully next year, we'll be back at the high school because we were at the middle school the last couple of years. So be back to the high school.
Any questions? Mr. Ragsdale?
So looks, I think it's great that these, you know, that they're so well attended, that they're popular and that they also turn a nice profit for the athletic department so that it can provide services for, for our students. As far as how we, is there any balance for how we try to ensure a good profit, but also make them affordable for kids to be able to attend? I'm just kind of curious how we think about making those types of decisions.
Yeah, I think we look at it, and I believe that we charge $175 for the week and then a second camp's $150. It's extremely affordable. It's 28 to 30 hours a week. It's a, it's a, it's a good deal. And if there's families that are hardship, obviously we'll take care of them and so forth. So I think it's, you know, when you go to an hourly rate, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty good deal. And we haven't gone up for a few years in, in the rate we judge.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, it says, I'm just noticing a steady increase in the number of participants over the years. Is that because there's more offerings or is there more kids or, I don't know if you have a general sense of-
Yeah, no, the, the number of offerings is similar year to year, just, you know, depending on more kids want to participate and so forth. It's up about like 18 kids from last year, but over the, you know, it's gone up quite a few. Our first year, we had 336 participants, 519 this year. So it's more popular, more kids, when friends do it and others want to do it and so forth, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to our personnel report. Ms. Armstrong?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
I'm just trying to keep the timestamp, so I'm just moving my alone. I feel very stressed.
As Mr. Stern Armstrong comes forward, in your packet, there is an update on, on a personnel report as of, it's now dated just from the time of submission of the packet, of course, to you. So there have, continually been some changes. I'll just say that thanks to Andrea for her work over the summer. This is, there's lots of departments that are very, very active over the summer, you know, in summer recess, but, and some that are a little bit more dormant. Personnel is not one of those and there has been a steady flow of people that, that Andrea has been working hard to put into place. She'll talk a little bit more about the vacancies here, but I'll just, I just want to acknowledge her work. And unfortunately, this continues even to within the last 24 hours as we are contending with very last minute resignations in some cases. I, I don't know if this makes us unique at all to other districts around us. I doubt it. But it's, so there is, there's a lot of volatility right now that she's working hard, very hard to try and, and keep track of. So with that, Andrea.
So the report that you have in hand, actually a few positions were filled. So just as FY, the, the middle school, I don't know that if Ed Kaiser was in, there was an opening for, sorry, for STEM teacher. It's the second for Kevin Welch's interim position. That was filled with Ed Kaiser for a one-year interim position. Just trying to go through a few others that came on. The math strategies in the middle school is also filled. And I feel like since I changed some of this, there's a few others that did get filled. But in the same note, we did have between last Thursday and last night, two additional resignations for educational assistance. Those are the, large majority of our open positions are the ed assistants. So currently we have roughly six that are open. We have a speech and language assistant position, which will hopefully be filled tomorrow. And we have a position for the grant that we're hoping will be filled tomorrow as well for a social worker. I will have an updated report if people want it, but there was definitely at least three positions that were filled since the report was initially put together last week. So we're working diligently trying to get them filled as soon as possible. Any questions?
Questions?
How often does it get personnel reports? Is it a month? Is it at least once a month when there are changes? I'm not sure what those typical segments-
We think initially.
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Quarterly, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I guess my, I'm sorry, if you don't mind asking the question.
Robert's Rules of Order. I'm so-
Sorry. You know, may it keep me on my-
Mrs. Burns?
Parliamentary procedure now. I guess my biggest concern are their educational assistance. And that, and I guess it's just par for course from the nature of it. Is that where you would say our biggest priority is now focusing and trying to fill those positions? Or are, do you find that, are there any other positions open at this juncture that maybe, this is probably a dual question, that we are, I mean, I know you're actively looking, but take a higher priority. I just want to make sure like the instructional areas are covered. But what, where are the, where do you find the priorities in filling positions currently?
I'm going to say, Mike, you said based on those positions, it is ed assistants, especially at Woburn Street, there's a number of them open, which they need to support. For instructional, we do not, if I'm not mistaken, we don't have anything open currently. So we've actually filled them.
Great.
I would say that a nice effort to everybody kind of scrambling the principals and the assistant principals to get those filled. But it is ed assistants that are really the priority at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Are we able to see any consistency or pattern in the reason why some of the people are tending, giving us resignations and leaving?
It's hard to say offhand. I think that some, underlying, some of it is salary information that people report, but I think large, some are, are moving out of the area. Some are taking different positions in other places. I think one was based on a transfer that she wasn't necessarily pleased with, but trying to work with everybody to make sure those positions are filled. But it seems like a variety of reasons. I think it's also, I mean, I think as most people know, that's a harder position to keep filled because you end up having ed assistants that are in college becoming eventually teachers. And so they're going to transition out. So we already know, like in the middle school, for example, we have an ed assistant that is planning on leaving come January because she'll be licensed. So she would like to move into a teacher's position. So for me, part of that is being really proactive and let's get those positions filled now if we can. So trying to plug away that all the things are going to be coming down the road as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. NE Safety and Security Grant Award. Mr. Gergio, do you want to say something? Want to pass that on?
Thank you. Back in March, an opportunity was identified by retired Chief Begonis that there was a grant opportunity out there. The program consisted of about $7.2 million for our school districts to address infrastructure, equipment, technology needs. It had a tight timeline. So a working group was put together comprised of quite a few individuals, but Officer Emily Stevens from the Wilmington Middle School, School Resource Officer, Jeanette Cork at the middle school, Kristen Walsh and Lisa Ahern at the Botwell, George Hooper and some other people that I will forget the names. We hate to name anyone when you can't remember everyone. But anyways, there was a working group that met to try to put together an application for these funds. So an application was put in and concentrated on rekeying the extra doors at the middle school. And if any money was available to do some other locations as well. The plan was also to upgrade the key lock system to have a stronger, more durable mechanism which prevents the unauthorized duplication of keys. We found out July 12th that we received the award for $19,735 and the funds must be expended by the end of this calendar year. So where we are now, we're working to get quotes to have this work done, working closely with George Hooper from Public Buildings, Superintendent of Public Buildings, to get some quotes to get the work done and see, you know, how many schools- to get some quotes to get the work done and see, you know, how many schools, if we can do anything more than the middle school. But that's kind of where we are now. We have four more months to spend the money, so. And any work that we do do will not interrupt the school day at all. So, they can, if we're going to rekey the middle school, it can be done, you know, during the school day without any interruption today.
Discussion? Questions? Someone like to make the recommended motion? Mrs. Newhouse?
I move to accept a safer schools grant in the amount of $19,735.
Second? Thank you, Mrs. Burns. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Go ahead, you can take it.
Item 6F in your packet, disposal of surplus equipment. This list has been put together thanks to Mr. Lord. It does detail a number of items that our Office of Structural Technology has put together that would be rightly considered old equipment, inoperable equipment or such, and that should be discontinued in its use throughout the district. According to what is certainly a practice that we should follow, seeking your declaration of surplus for disposal, this item is here for you to, to make a motion to declare the items listed. I won't go through them all, but they're, they're there, and certainly would like to move to, to recycle them. So, I'm happy to take any questions, or certainly, Mr. Lord is here too, if you might have any. But otherwise, looking to have your motion this evening.
Questions?
I just have to say, this is one of the first surplus lists I have that doesn't include books on it. Usually, I see loads and loads of old books, but...
Mr. Raxdale?
I think I made the same comment last year, but when it comes to this type of thing, given the way that schools, you know, find uses for resources, and will take everything that they can possibly make use of in some, you know, efficient way, that when they actually say, "No, we really have no use for this," then you can believe them and take them at their word, that they really have no value. Because if they did, they would have, they would have found it. I will move to declare this attached list of equipment as surplus for disposal.
Is there a second? Mr. Fennelly? Any discussion?
I just have one quick question. The Chrome box, is it a Chrome book, or is there, am I, is it actually a Chrome box?
That's the, is that a cart, not a cart can, but a storage?
Sorry.
It's a box, old computers. Thank you very much. All right. All in favor? It's unanimous. And then that brings us to 6G.
Right. If I may, I'd love to invite Ms. Molly Dickerson and Christine Murray for, they're going to, they have a brief presentation this evening on the school counselor title change that follows the memo that is included in your, in your packet.
Hello?
I'm Christine Murray, the Coordinator, Behavioral Health and Social Emotional Support.
I'm Molly Dickerson, I'm the School Counselor, Guidance Curriculum Team Leader.
So, as Dr. Brand talked briefly about the reorganization of the Student Support Office, that led us some great opportunity to collaborate together and work on our first focus area of a school counseling update. So, out of the Student Support Office, we do have the Director of Student Support Services, Alice Brown-Lagrande, who's in the audience, myself, the Coordinator of Special Ed, Leanne Ebert, Coordinator of Nursing Services, Dorian Crowe, and, as it says, Guidance Curriculum Team Leader, formerly, it's the School Counseling Department Curriculum Team Leader. So, I'll have Molly go into a little bit about the change.
So, I'm really excited to make this change, or to recommend this change to the district. I think it's something that's been coming in the profession for a while. So, as you saw in your memo, the American School Counselor Association and the Massachusetts School Counselor Association have used those titles for decades. And they've used the term "school counselor" for an equally long period of time in place of guidance counselor. So, you may think of your former school experience and the guidance counselor that you may have had. And this change is just an attempt to kind of keep the profession up to date with the discipline and the changes that have been coming in our role in schools, that they're not necessarily, we're not necessarily doing the same work as you might have seen a guidance counselor do 20 years or so ago. In 2017, after lobbying from the Massachusetts School Counselor Association, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts did actually change the license title. So, the license used to be professional support personnel guidance, and now it is professional support personnel school counselor. So, why the change? Like I said, you may remember your guidance counselor, and the goal is just to help people think more comprehensively about the role of counselors. The role is changing as the needs of students change. So, counselors in this sort of modern day are trained to help students in academic achievement, career and college readiness, and social emotional development. So, where you might have seen guidance counselors staying in offices and doing work, helping students apply to college, or maybe that's the kind of picture people have in their head of guidance counselors, the role of school counselors is meant to be more comprehensive and to cover all three of those domains for students. And we hope that people will think of counselors as being integral to their students' experience in all three of those areas. So, this is just something nice to look at that shows the role of counselors. So, the first one there says core curriculum. So, the role is to provide large group, classroom, small group, and individual instruction and intervention. The American School Counselor Association, I did bring it, has a national model for school counseling programs. So, we do have professional standards, and we also have student learning standards that we should be working towards in our work with students. We also consult and collaborate with administrators, teachers, parents, and outside care providers, work with individual students. The left, there you see responsive services is what you might think of as traditional counseling, so working with students individually, small groups, and crisis response. School counselors are not trained as mental health providers. We don't provide long-term therapy, but the training is meant for short-term care and crisis intervention. So, on the last point there, you can see that counselors now hold master's degrees in school counseling, where it may have previously been guidance counseling, it is school counseling. And we're expected to know a different subject matter that contains counseling, learning and behavior. So, that includes motivation, academic achievement, human development. That includes intellectual development, social and emotional development. Mental health, that includes the knowledge of mental health disorders and other treatment modalities, and college and career planning.
So, what does that look like with Wilmington Public Schools and the school counselor change? So, in alignment with these changes at the state and national level in other districts and what we're working towards, we're really looking to adopt that change. And we've already started that process from school counselor to replace that outdated term of guidance. So, district-wide, we will look at changing the office from a guidance office to the counseling office at all levels. We're very fortunate to have a great team that is dedicated and is often running, starting with the first days of school and helping students transition. So, kind of breaking it down staff-wise, we have Carrie Fitch is the School Adjustment Counselor at both ECC centers. Lisa Gibbs is a school counselor at the Shawshin Elementary School. Tom McCrae, a school psychologist at the Woburn Street School. Becky Farnham, the school counselor at the North Intermediate. Megan St. Dennis is newly hired as a district psychologist, but she is based at the West Intermediate School. Deb Horning is a school counselor at the middle school. Kelly LaRoche, school counselor at the middle school. Julie Norton, school counselor at the middle school. Kellyanne Sweeney was just recently hired last year as a school social worker at the middle school. Sabrina Piveo was just recently hired last year as well as a school psychologist at the middle school. And then up at the high school, we have Laura Cagiano as a school counselor. Molly plays a dual role as a caseload of students that she has on her caseload for school counselor, and she's also the School Counseling Department CTO. Maura O'Mara as a school counselor at the high school. Jess Rugo, school counselor. Ashley LeBlanc is newly hired this year as a school counselor. Amanda Cranston is a social worker at the high school, along with Christie Jones as another social worker that we have. Suzanne Garberino acts as the district-wide school psychologist, but she is based at the high school. Jacqueline Dammie was just hired this year. We're welcoming her to the Wilmington community, and she is based at the Beltwell and Shawshin. Jeff Brenner has been with us for a while. Dr. Brenner, he is our district psychologist. And we are in the process of hiring a point-four social worker at the high school for the Bright program that we recently spoke about here. And that is wrapping up hopefully soon to get that up and running. And we are also fortunate to have two district BCBAs that go pre-K through 12, Jill Sparrow and Adam Harlow. So, it is, if you see the word "school counselor" up there, previously, it would have said guidance. A lot of these clinicians have dual licenses, so they might be a school adjustment counselor, but they also might hold a guidance or an LS CSW. So, when we look at the word "social worker," it is also as a license in the DUCY as a school adjustment counselor as well. When we look at this chart as a role, someone like Carrie Fitch was hired as a school adjustment counselor. She may have other licenses, but she was hired as a school adjustment counselor for the district. So, when we look at school counselor, like I said, they might have also a school adjustment. So, when you're seeing that six school adjustment counselors, they may contain that license, and hold that license, I should say, but they were hired as a guidance counselor, a school counselor. So, we are very fortunate to have a dedicated staff. And again, if you're watching, if you do have any students that might have a need, please reach out to your building-based counselor or district psychologist. For more information, we listed a bunch of websites, but ASCA is the American School Counsel Association that holds a lot of information about the difference between the role of counselors. And also, on the Department of Ed website, you could find some more information as well. Any questions?
Mr. Raxdale?
So, it sounds as though many of these changes in the role is something that has already occurred, and it's more about, that this title change is more about catching up to what they're already doing. Would that be correct, or are there also any substantive changes going to be made in what they're doing as they're transitioned to this new title?
Two-part question, but I do think with the increase of the mental health, you are seeing these counselors doing a lot more of that. However, we look at it kind of that tier-one, tier-two, tier-three. The school counselors are really available for all students at tier-one. When we get up to a school psychologist or a social worker, adjustment counselor, they might be providing some more intensive services that would qualify them to use, you know, community partnerships, the criminal justice system. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
So, just out of curiosity, because I actually have a sister who is, I think she still goes by guidance in their district. And I know what she does, because we discuss, she's one of my, where I go, my, one of my go-tos, especially with the counseling piece. I know that she utilizes, when she does have, I don't want to speak for her, but students who are in crisis, because she's in a district where there's a lot of, a lot of immigration, a lot of homelessness, that she utilizes the school psychologist when there's, you know, she doesn't carry a mental health piece, although with the family we grew up in, she should. But, but I'm just saying, is that, is that how, would that be how a lot of the school counselors would? I'm, I'm not sure. That they would bring in, you know, if you have a student in crisis, that maybe something larger? Would you be, would you, is, is that the role where they'd be bringing in, let's say, maybe one of the adjustment counselors or one of the school psychologists to get involved and get them on? Or, or would you, I mean, I just, just to clarify, because I know you're talking about if there's a student crisis, there'd be outreach to, you know, resource, other resources in the community. But I just, I don't, I don't know how it's set up in Wilmington. What, how does that work here?
I can speak for the high school, at least in the middle school. So, at the high school level, your counselors, your school counselors would be potentially the first step that a student might present to. Or you might have a student come to your office, and that's where the crisis appears. And then we are fortunate enough to have social workers in the district, or their license is school adjustment, where we can refer for more intensive support. So, your school counselor might be the first stop, and might be the first one to talk to that student and say, "What do you need, and how can we help?" And if they need more intensive support, then they are referred to our social workers for more sort of referral or ongoing support.
Here, okay. Great, thank you.
My question, and I apologize, because it's already been answered, but the school adjustment counselor being just at the early childhood centers, whereas in all the older grades, it's a school social worker. I mean, it's essentially, it's the same license, correct?
Yeah.
I guess what is the reasoning for having, you know, Mrs. Fitch, adjustment counselor, whereas somebody else would be a school social worker? What's the rationale for the change in title?
It was just how it was.
It's just how, it's just how it happened?
Yeah, I think just how it was posted at that point in time, and with the change of just different buildings and leadership, that's how it was posted. But they do hold the same dual role. Yeah.
Can I, if you may, just add? I think, and that's an example of some of the other, because we sort of hone in a little bit more looking at sort of the ups and downs under Student Support Services and looking across the district. In addition to this, there are some other, certainly, I've come to learn about, we spoke a little bit about some, we don't necessarily have a consistent template, if you will, of, of titles across the district, particularly at the elementary schools. And I'm not sure if that's just a victim of circumstance over time, and how, as was mentioned, how that particular job was posted. So, there, it seems fairly clear, there's the consistency of services provided, but there's different titles of people who might be delivering it appropriately or not rightly or wrongly. So, we are kind of keying in on that, not just within, in this domain, but just more broadly around thinking about how we're going forward and trying to, trying to establish that consistent template, so that if we say we, we really feel we need a social worker at the elementary level, then what should that look like across, across all schools? So, it's broader than just this domain again, for sure, but...
I have a question. And so, and kind of in that, same, just thinking about, so Woburn Street has a, no, I'm sorry, North Intermediate has a school counselor, and then the Western Intermediate has a district school psychologist. So, would that, would this, would it be different for kids? Are they getting the same service? What happens if the student needs the district school psycho, I guess? So, what does that look like, I guess, if it needs to move to a different?
Typically, the district school psychologist provides the testing. So, at the North Intermediate, the counseling piece would be there. But if it was, again, a more tier-three intervention, that someone might need more support through an IEP, let's say, they would have a district psychologist, and that would be also available for them to have any assessments done. But as far as a clinical-based person, Becky Farnham is the counselor there. But if we needed assistance from a school psychologist district-wide, they would come to the building to perform any assessment, risk assessment.
So, what if the West needs a school counselor?
So, she would act, she acts in that dual role? Yes, correct.
So, she would do this as the testing, but also would be, would serve in that role?
Yes. So, providing more consistency, again, with this reorganization and moving forward, that would be something that we look at district-wide.
And provide testing just in that building or across the district?
So, right now, we have four district psychologists speaking, six, four. Yeah, so that would be, at any point in time with that title of district, they can go from any school at a district to do testing. It really is a collaborative effort. But being at a building just creates that dual role of both clinical and the testing piece.
Thank you.
It is unique, but we're looking at kind of just streamlining it so everyone is more consistent.
And then you did mention the college and career planning. And so, was there, so it, there seems like there's just so many things for the school counselor to, to do. It's a lot of hats to wear. So, I imagine during that end of junior, whenever the students are really starting to need that extra support, do we have, is there extra support? So, I don't need to, that's a question answered now, but I would just love to, to know sort of what happens at those high times when many more students are needing some of the school counselor than they might at other times? How, what sorts of, what kind of supports do we have in place for, especially the college search? I would imagine it's a tricky time of year, or those points in the year where applications are due and all of that?
We're very busy at that time. We're actually very lucky at the high school that our, so the American School Counselor Association has a recommended ratio of counselor to student. And we are very lucky that ours is just about, we're actually a little bit under their national recommendation. We have, their schools in... We have, there are schools in Arizona and California that have 400, 500 students to one counselor, which is impossible. So at the high school, we have about 200 for each counselor. So the fall is very busy. We do classroom instruction to get the students in a large group, and then we do individual meetings through the fall and spring and winter to get the students prepared for college. But the hope is that, at least at the high school level, we do instruction across grade levels, so they start really planning for college in the ninth grade. So by the time they get to senior year, we know kind of where the needs are and we can plan for the day. But it is very busy, the fall for us, senior year is very busy.
The ratio is one to 250 ideally, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? We don't need, you don't need us to do anything here.
No, no, it's just informational.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful, thank you. All right, and that brings, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Item 6H is the 2019-2020 Middle School Handbook. And if I may, Mr. Phillips, if you, if I could ask you to come forward. This, this is informational, just to take you back a little bit in time towards the spring of last school year. You will recall that I made the decision to pull back the Middle School Handbook. Traditionally, or at least within recent times, the Middle School Handbook, as I came to learn, has come forward to the school committee for, for review along with the High School Handbook. And for a variety of different reasons, not the least of which was Mr. Phillips coming on board, but a couple of others, it just didn't seem like the right time to bring the handbook before you as a committee. And I, just a point to mention again, and I know I've mentioned this previously, the High School Handbook under Massachusetts general law most definitely does need to be approved by school committees, and that's, that's really a function of that timing in which we do it in the spring to make sure that you're comfortable as a governing body, to make sure that that's in place and that can be distributed. The Middle School Handbook sits at a different place. It is my understanding that in the recent past, at least you as a committee have, have indeed voted similarly to the High School Handbook. Certainly, that's something that if you would like to do that going forward, you're more than welcome to, and I would suggest if so doing, we ensure that that is incorporated into policy, respective school committee policy. But it's here this evening for informational because of what I just described, not being in the same place last spring as ideally it wanted to be. And so I thought that just briefly, Mr. Phillips could share with you just the handbook and what his thoughts are going forward as we, as he looks to get settled in. And as I said to him recently, before you know it, we will be talking again about handbooks, dare I say it, for the 2020-21 school year. So Mr. Phillips with that.
So I think the copy that you guys have, this is a cleaner copy, but it does have some things highlighted and read in there. And like Dr. Brand said, we have not, certainly I have not had a chance to really dig deep into this in terms of how we might adjust it. And I think it does need some adjusting. It's a pretty long and lengthy and procedure-filled handbook. But the things that did change are things that we have made some changes in the two months that I've been here. So just quickly, some of the things that are in there so that you can be aware of what's going on. You'll see there's a small section about homerooms. We have essentially merged homeroom to our first period classrooms. And the rationale behind that is, at the beginning of every day, there was seven minutes that every student sat in a room and got essentially announcements and took attendance. And then they would go and transition to classes, which is, you know, give or take maybe two to five minutes of transition. And the question that we asked was, could we maximize that time differently? And so we just merged into the first period of class and said, all right, your first period class teacher will take attendance there. And now, hopefully, we can now have additional 10 minutes of instructional time after taking attendance and avoid having to have kids transition and all of that, that you might lose a few minutes every day. And so the idea is perhaps now kids can, can capture, or teachers can capture back 20 to 30 minutes of instruction a week, which adds up. So that's one, one small piece that's there. You'll also hear something about, in there, there's something about Launchpad. And this is a term that we created, but now that we don't have a sort of organizing unit of the homeroom, because it's been merged into classrooms, we needed some kind of organizing unit for the times when we might want to group kids in different configurations on sort of special days that may not follow the normal academic schedule that we have. So for example, these last two days of school, we've had kids grouped in Launchpads because we wanted them to be working in smaller groups with teachers and focusing heavily on social, emotional, relationship buildings at the beginning of the school year. So we, we've had today and yesterday, an alternative schedule in order to accomplish that, that function. The other thing you'll see in here is briefly something added in bullet points around schoolwide expectations. So one thing that we wanted to be very clear about.
Which part are you on?
Oh, sorry, I'm on schoolwide expectations page 31. Sorry, I should have noted that.
28.
All right. So in my copy, it's 31. Maybe I'll hand these out. That might be better.
And I can't find that homeroom thing either. I'm so sorry, I'm trying to follow along here.
All right, so, sorry, homeroom is a brief snippet on page 13. Launchpad, I believe, is briefly mentioned on page 17. And then the bullets of schoolwide expectations are on page 31, if I am correct. No, I could be wrong.
I'm just not, I see Launchpad on 13. Just not seeing home, anything about homeroom.
All right, Launchpad is on 13. Yeah.
On page 11, under school hours, it mentions students going to the lockers and according to first period for attendance?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's right. So I have these wrong, I apologize. Yes, so the not homeroom is on page 11, because there's really just one line there that they're going to first period class rather than to homeroom. Thank you for, for checking that. And then on page 13 is where we have the brief description of Launchpad.
Thank you.
So, and then I may need to, and I apologize because there's been a few copies of this floating around. Ah, yes, so on this one, page 26, is where we have the schoolwide expectations. So I'll speak briefly about that. One thing that we wanted to do over the summer, and one of the feedback that I got from, from staff, certainly, and some parents that I've spoken with, was we need to have some consistent schoolwide expectations that we can be clear about, that kids can know what we expect, certainly in common areas. And a team of educators came together and spent some time over the summer to develop those, particularly for the major common areas within the school. And how, you know, making sure that these aligned with the schoolwide values that we post of the four Rs. So you just get a sense of what those are, and these last couple of days, in their Launchpads, we've been, we've developed a whole, the same committee developed a whole series of lessons that teachers could deliver so that we're being consistent around our expectations, that they're getting the same message, that at least at the beginning of the year, all of our kids and all of our teachers are speaking the same, the same thing. So, and that's for the reason to have a consistent community where kids know how to navigate what's going on. The other two pieces that are added are more policy pieces, but my understanding, if these are, these are work that has happened at the district levels around bullying and around vaping. And now I'm not sure exactly which pages there may be. Under my notes, it was 63, but that was a different draft perhaps?
The one's on 59.
59, okay. So these are just putting in from what I, again, what I understand has been policy work that's been done prior to my arrival, and we just want to make sure that they were in the handbook so that we're consistent. Are there any questions? Am I allowed to ask that? And maybe that's.
No. She's laughing at me because I'm worse than a two-year-old asking.
Mrs. Burns, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. Launchpad.
Yes, ma'am.
So I take this as an advisory block time that I think we have talked over the past couple of years, but we've never been able to really executed it because of how do you, where do you put it in when instructional time is such, so demanding? So for this Launchpad, how does this, where does this work in? Is this working into the schedule itself, or how is this, where does this come into the school?
Right now, it doesn't have a permanent place. So it's not within the rotation of the schedule that we have. It is, it began sort of out of the need to have an organizing structure for grouping kids when we don't have a homeroom. Since we merged the homeroom away, like, how do we group kids if for a particular day, we need to do some kind of different type of function for that day? And so that's where it came from. But I see where your mind's going. I think that there's the potential in long term to build on the idea of we have small groups of kids working closely with, you know, groups of teachers, individual teachers, so that these are groups that are eight to 12 kids with an adult. So there's a real possibility for building relationships and continuing this in, in ways in the future.
If there's consistency.
If there's consistency.
I mean, I think that would be great, so it's just trying to, so there's going to be, at this juncture, it'll be used inconsistently, or is that?
At this juncture, we, we needed, so it is not, we haven't built it out in a, in a brand program like an advisory. I'm very familiar with advisory programming, and I'm a big fan of that, and I think it has, has huge merits. I think the amount of work that one would need to do would be a little bit more than what we had time for here. And so for, for here, it was primarily, the work was, was the schedule of taking advantage of the first two and a half days of the school year for us to be consistent in our measure on expectations and to provide opportunity for kids to begin to build relationships with each other and with, with teachers, rather than, say, jumping in and saying, right off the bat, we're doing academics. We really wanted to send a message as a school that the relationships between kids and, among kids and among kids and adults matter, and that that's the foundation for the rest of the work for the school year. So temporary, there may be instances throughout the year that we may pull it back out, but right now, we haven't developed it into a more comprehensive program like an advisory.
Can I ask that, because this is such a, this is new, and I think very, I'm familiar to, you know, most of us in the district, do you think maybe describing when this will come in play at this juncture may be helpful, so that people know, is this, because some parents may think that this is something currently being done, as opposed to, you know, Launchpad will be launched, or however you want to word it, at certain times throughout the school year, or however you want to do, just giving a little more explanation as to how this is used at the middle school and when?
Okay.
If you can define it. I just think that it might offer better clarification in the onset.
I, I thank you for that advice. So yes.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Can I just jump in? Four of us have middle school children, actually.
I know.
So I'm just curious, and I know, I'm sure other people have questions, how do you think that students are perceiving, we know how our children are perceiving it, but how, overall, how do you feel the students have sort of perceived this, this week?
So I don't, I don't know what it looked like in the past, but I have spent a fair amount of time poking in on, on classrooms and the work that they're doing. I see, what I'm looking for is opportunities for kids to connect and to share a bit of who they are and hopefully begin to build relationships with, with each other and with staff. So some of the things that they were doing, I mean, when I walk in and I hear laughter, I say, that's good, you know? And for some of our teachers in some of the situations, it's, it's a, they're very comfortable with this. And for some of our folks, it's, it's a little different. But by and large, I see things, folks seem pretty happy, and it seems like we're beginning that, you know, that first, I mean, it's always awkward at the beginning, especially if you're, I'm thinking of their sixth graders, you know, it's, it's a new experience and there's some awkwardness, but I see that what we're doing is, is sort of breaking the ice, and I see, you know, we're beginning to have some pretty good conversations and kids are sharing a bit about things that matter to them, which I see as a good foundation for, for what's going to happen further, you know? And one of the things that I've seen in, in past experiences that can be, you know, really sad is that if you come into a school and you ask a kid, you know, who's, who else is in your classroom, and they don't know the names of their, their classmates, you know, like, that can happen in some school situations. Here, they're doing all sorts of name games, you know, just, and those things, I think, do set a tone. So I would say I feel pretty positive about what's happened. And I, you know, we, we are going to do some feedback. We haven't gotten to that place. This is just anecdotal, and it's only been a day and a half, and it's not, you know, tremendously groundbreaking sort of stuff that we're doing in terms of a day and a half, but I think it does set a tone, and it says, this is what we value, and I hope kids get, get that as the message around, this is what we value.
Thank you. Mr. Raxdale.
On the Launchpad, do educators have the same group of kids? Is that a?
Yes.
A fixed unit?
Okay. A fixed unit.
It wasn't clear to me from the description whether, like, it got moved around or you got a different group of kids or a different teacher, but that's.
So for the last day and a half, they've essentially been working with the same group of kids with the same teachers. And, and some of the pads are kind of partnering up, so, so that's kind of a nice thing. We've sort of been strategic and more veteran teachers who maybe think have skill sets in this with more novice teachers, so that they can kind of work together on this.
I have to say, I understand it much better when you explain it than when my daughter talks about it. She didn't seem to have the same depth of understanding, how it all fit together.
Okay. Well, hopefully, you can see there's a rationale behind it and that it's a rationale that we think is a very humane rationale. And, you know, I'll be honest with what I've heard about the needs of the middle school, what we want to be doing is creating a place that is humane and where kids feel cared for. And this is one small thing about it, but hopefully, it's, it's symbolic.
And one other question, which is looking at the expectations, I do, I like the section on the expectations in, in the different, different places and different contexts. But I'm very curious, under the hallway expectations, one of the expectations is rebounding after misfortune.
Hmm.
And I'm just really curious.
Why is that in the hallway expectation?
What hallway misfortunes we're thinking kids might encounter and how we expect them to rebound from.
That's a good question.
What's the third from the bottom?
Twenty-seven.
On page 27.
Yes.
Under the hallway expectations. The other ones, I think I totally get.
Good, I'm glad that, that you get them. I, to be honest, I, I am, I'm not exactly sure that this is devoted solely to hallway. I think that this is something that happens, so I'm kind of, that may be a glitch there, but it is, it is something that we are hoping to build resilience, and so I'm not, you know, I'm sure there could be, I, I don't know what I would say would be a hallway misfortune, but this is a theme that we've been talking about. It may be.
That makes perfect sense, makes perfect sense as a broad.
It's a broad, it's a broader theme than necessarily a hallway expectation. So to be honest, I mean, there may be, so that's good feedback here, I'll be, I'll be honest. I mean, we wanted to get you this as, as quickly as possible, so forgive me if there's some things that may not be totally consistent, but literally, we've been producing this last week to get it out for, for this week.
Any other questions or concerns? So just for the public, homeroom, now attendance is taken, because I'm sure we've all heard different things from our, from our kids.
Yes.
So attendance is first period?
First period.
But that is not, 7:20 is still the time that students report to first period. There was a little bit of confusion, I think, some students felt as though they should be going to first period at 7:10, but 7:20 is still the time.
Seven, 7:10 is when transition.
Where they come in and go to their lockers and all of that?
Yes. So, and then 7:20 is the official start of the first period.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, it's a little bit confusing to me, too. So they start to transition at seven-ten, so they're expected to be in their first period class, which is now their homeroom at seven-ten, or at seven-twenty?
Seven-twenty.
They're expected to be in the building at seven-ten.
In the building at seven-ten.
Which has been, which is, just as, is consistent, there's been no, I'm just going to add that piece. There's no change in the schedule or the start time or end time of the school day. You know, inasmuch as it's the same as this handbook overall with the small things that Mr. Phillips talked about, and the, trying to tinker, if you will, with the homeroom, launchpad. Structurally, from the scheduling standpoint, everything else remains exactly like it was, as would be expected, you know, given the circumstance of just coming in, of course. So it's, seven-ten is, entry starts, staff begin as well at seven-ten. They have to be in, students have to be in their locations at seven-twenty.
And if students can go to their locker quickly, and they're done at seven-fifteen, they report to first period. And there'll be a teacher there prepared for them. Okay. Mrs. Burns?
So, under school hours, so, but the building opens to students at seven a.m. Is there any concern with 20 minutes of those students who do go in, whether it be bathrooms or whatnot? They've got 20 minutes before they really have to be someplace. I'm just.
Yeah.
Because I know there are some students who are waiting for the school to open, and I just didn't know if there were any concerns with regards to that. I like this idea absolutely, but that's kind of something.
So we have it broken into two chunks. Essentially, my understanding is that, at least last year, historically, the doors opened at seven o'clock. And so from seven o'clock to seven-ten, we have essentially two areas for children to come in and essentially wait is what's happening. One is the cafeteria, and one is the auditorium. And then at seven-ten, they're dismissed from those locations to their first period class. And at that time, they have between seven-ten and seven-twenty, when they need to be ready to learn in that class, to go to their locker, you know, use the bathroom, whatever they need to do to get set for the day. Then the thing that's important on a logistic piece is that teachers are officially on duty at seven-ten, so that they can be in the hallways, they can be, you know, so we can deal with the whole school and movement, whereas before seven-ten, they're not officially on duty, so they must, we must have the kids in a place where we have fewer adults, but we can adequately supervise and monitor kids in that large group.
Perfect, thank you.
It is, if I just may, for people who are watching, and not to belabor this point, but again, this has remained status quo.
Yeah.
It's something that already, Mr. Phillips and I have talked about. I think we need to carefully look at this. The pieces that he just laid out, coupled with the arrival of some buses quite significantly before that time, I think is another issue, and there's some layers of issues here that I think we need to look at in time. Mr. Phillips, to his credit, recognized this almost immediately, and I said, I couldn't agree more. I think it's something we need to take a careful look at, and you just heard of entry of students at seven o'clock, staff reporting at seven-ten, and then you've got this other gap of time. So, again, for members of the public, nothing has changed with time on learning or entry or so on. All of that's the same. But we do have to look at that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, will, do parents, will parents receive this? Is this up?
It will, it will be up. It is, again, we were moving pretty quickly, so it's not substantially different than what is currently up, but we will be posting it.
Great. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips, yes.
To you.
Item six, six I in your packet, superintendent evaluation is the title of this item. And there are some, a couple of documents in your packet, excuse me, and for members of the community that might be interested. First off, a memo that I'll get into in just a moment that provides you with a first glance pass at my current thinking around goals for your consideration and ultimate approval as part of my evaluation process for the upcoming year. What a way I know for me to start the school year, the first meeting back, but we need to do this, this is very important. But coupling, or accompanying that, I'm sorry, are a couple of items from the Department of Education, too, if I remember correctly. A presentation that was recently delivered at the superintendent's conference in the summer around the evaluation of superintendents and the revision of the model for the superintendent rubric that I provided with you. I think M.A.S.S. has been, or M.A.S.C. has been circulating these as well, too. And then the actual rubric. So those are for informational purposes. But I do note, as you'll see in my memo, that I quite like the revisions that have been proposed. I should point out that they are, they're an option for you as a committee to use. You don't have to, but certainly you can, and if you are interested in it, I would be very interested as well, too. I think it's a nice set of revisions that streamline the rubric. I'm not sure if streamline is the right word, but clean it up a little bit. So tonight, the intention was, or is, I'm sorry, or hopefully might be, we don't have this one? Okay. There were slides, but that's okay, we'll, I'll talk to it. The, so the memo points out what the new, the new structure suggests as guidance, and that is one professional practice goal, one student learning goal, two to four district improvement goals, and then six to eight aligned indicator goals. And so in the memo that follows, I provide this with you again. This is meant very much for your feedback, and thank you for some, some of you that I know had shared some initial thoughts, and if I may, I'll just, I'll walk through these briefly. So professional practice goals, again, with that, that idea of having one professional practice goal. One of the things that I fully intend to do that is a replication of my approach last year, and that is, and thanks to Tristan, who's in the midst of this right now, scheduling, on average, one school visit, one visit, sorry, to each school every month, on average. It doesn't work out quite to 10, but it's between, it's around eight, eight to nine. But in addition to that, one of the things that I know upon reflection that I, I didn't, just from a logistical standpoint, have enough time to do, is get to all staff meetings across the district. And as I think about my upcoming goal setting with our respective principals and building leaders, it's one of the areas that I'll be asking them to focus in on, and this, to me, aligns with that in terms of giving me the opportunity, not just to be in attendance, but on a more broader level, take a landscape view of how we're using this time across the district, what this looks like in each of our school facilities. So more than just the attendance piece, and rightfully so, and with apologies of not maybe articulating this near enough, but physically, that would seem to be just a checkoff. It's at a deeper level than what I'm thinking about here in terms of being able to identify themes or areas for opportunity for further growth from the use instructionally of this time that contractually, teachers have to attend. In addition to that, department meetings, so, again, not flushing this out quite enough, but one of the things that I had some opportunity to do, but didn't across the board, was attend all of our academic department areas, mathematics, foreign language, and so on. And what I'm thinking about this is from a sort of system standpoint, secondary level, really, the opportunity to be present at these meetings, see and hear and listen to the work that is transpiring, and especially as it relates to the role of some aspects of our strategic plan going forward. So attendance is one thing, that would be an easy thing to check off, but on a deeper level, what can this yield in terms of insight around common approaches and our use of this time across the district? So that's professional practice goal. Student learning goal is related very closely to the document I know that you don't have before you right now, but certainly we'll see at the next meeting, and that is the strategic plan. Within that plan, Objective 3.1, as you'll soon see, there's a specific identification of focusing in on inclusion, diversity, and equity, and that was some sort of source of conversation for those, certainly, of you that were a part of the planning that you might recall. And so this really, I would urge you to think about as a multi-year goal, not just the development or formation of this committee, but really setting the foundation for work around gathering an audit of sorts, information around what our district looks like, around inclusion, inclusion, diversity, and equity, defining what that looks like, what the look-for's are to look like, and then setting out a plan longer term around how we can hone in on professional development and action planning for improvement as it relates to inclusion, diversity, and equity. So that's student learning goal, is my, is my suggestion. District improvement goals, there are three. The first one has to do specifically with facilities and our, and our learning environments, not just, as you'll note here, focusing, working collaboratively with you as a school committee, but also with the respective constituent groups or leadership groups, I suppose, if you will, at the town level, really to try and formalize a plan of sort of near-term and longer-term view for how we're going to tackle required improvements in our learning facilities, our schools down the road. And in particular, you'll also note that I call out in there our student support services. I've made mention of this before. I really think that it is, we have a large number of staff that are housed in quite insufficient space, in my opinion, and we need to find a solution for them for lots of different reasons. And so that's incorporated into goal number one, district improvement goal number one, district improvement goal number two, superintendent's advisory council. So this goal here specifically is my thinking, and this goes along the lines of some of the themes that were that were surfaced through the strategic planning process, and that is, we have an opportunity and a need to expand our communication with and between our stakeholder groups and community groups. Everything from our school councils to our PTOs to WEF and the like. I think that there's a rich opportunity here, if you will, to bring together in sort of a unified way representatives from all of these disparate groups in an effort to try and foster two-way communication, with the outcome, for me, being that if we could create the structure and create a vehicle, you know, somewhat like perhaps a committee meeting where we have agendas and minutes and so on, really the opportunity to share information that has to do with the work of the district, and also utilize the opportunity to talk about common concerns or areas for growth or improvement. For example, some of the things that I know I heard last year was conversations around which direction should our PTOs be going, around fundraising, that kind of thing. I think that this entity can hold some promise in terms of, again, fostering that two-way communication. And then thirdly, developing a report, a district improvement goal, developing a report to the community that includes highlights of our school and district performance data, accomplishments, and achievement. It seems to me like, and this goes along the lines of communication in many respects, but I think that there's an important need and opportunity to pull together highlights of the accomplishments of us as a district, measures primarily probably through DESI, but not just MCAS and the like, that really, on an annual basis, can be a report to the community. That's something through my office that I would take on, this is an annual type of report, that can serve as a communication tool for our parents, guardians, community members around sort of the state of the state. Things that we're proud of, things that are happening and such. We don't have anything like that right now, certainly that I've seen anyway, at least in recent times, and I think this is an important opportunity to leverage the information that we have around us and to be able to report it out. So that's district goal number three. And then finally, the last page, page three of the memo, you can see, and the recommendation, again, of the Department of Education's thinking around superintendent evaluation. And so what I did was I identified a number of opportunities that align to the indicators, so there's, you'll know, there's a whole host of indicators, of course, far more than this, of which you would very appropriately evaluate me on, but there are some here that I've identified, six, four, five, sorry, that dovetail with the strategic plan in some respects. For example, 2A3, social emotional well-being, and that has to do with the start time committee that you'll hear about, I'll be talking about next meeting on September 11th. Community stakeholder engagement and the like, they're laid out there for you. So I know that that's a lot, but truly meant to be a first pass. Would welcome your thoughts, your ideas, your suggestions. Ultimately, this has, these have to be approved by you, and so my hope and thought is that at the next meeting, I could come back before you with perhaps any revisions or recommendation, recommended changes you'd like to see incorporated, and then seeking your final approval. And this will obviously become an important piece around which you engage in my evaluation in the year to come. So with that, I'm very happy to take any comments, questions, or suggestions or recommendations.
Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. I have been thinking about this since I got my packet and read through it. Because I'm, and I, again, I know this is just preliminary, this is just the, you know, ground zero, and you're going to work from this piece here, which I think they're all wonderful targets. In your discussion with developing a report to the community that includes highlights of school and district performance data, accomplishments, and achievements, just, I guess, trying to wrap my head around what that could look like, because I think as we go throughout the year, that is encompassed. I mean, I don't know if it's like a, was it like a wrap-up at the end of the year you were thinking about? I mean, I think like that union, address of the union aspect, I think bodes well in the fall, you know, especially as we prepare for our budget season. You know, and maybe I'm not on the same, I'm not understanding it in how you were, what your approach to it would be, but I think that would be awesome, you know what I mean? Especially as we gear up towards other discussions with regards to facilities and all. I think that's all, it all dovetails together, as you said. I just, you know, I think my thought is, and I think where my concern is, is I think this is great for this year. I think maybe, as I said, it may be placed well in the fall, right before budget season, but I like, I like it, and I would like you to find that, find that rhythm with something like this. You know, these are the accomplishments, you know, highlights, I think it's necessary. I just, as again, I'm still trying to wrap my head around it, if I'm understanding how your approach to it and how, you know, what your effectiveness, the effectiveness of what you're hoping to attain from doing this will be, and you know, you know, I'm just.
Yeah, I do, and thank you for the feedback. So a couple of thoughts. So this is not a concept that I sort of, I've seen this in other districts, and in effect, it really becomes, you know, if you think about the town report, that is a year, sort of a year in review, if you will, or a year in the past, when we have to submit the information for the, for the town, the budget process, we're, as you may know, if you follow that, we're really pulling together highlights from the year in review. And in a similar way, that's what this probably would be. So, so thinking about developing, so the action piece of this is not sort of a goal that would be reoccurring every year, but coming up with a template, if I can use that term, that establishes a report that can pull together different data that can be refreshed on an annual basis, and probably it would be in the fall. I'm not sure necessarily by the time of budget, but it's, I know what you're thinking around that, but that would pull in the Department of Education's official results, such as enrollment, that will be soon available, you know, from the view of, or October 1 enrollment, say, from last year. Maybe that's not a good example, but say MCAS scores, right? So we will get MCAS scores from the 2018-19 school year. If I was to start to work on this idea now, it would showcase those, right? So sort of a year in review, but something that could be a tool to be able to refer to monitoring our testing results, budget, other disparate data that some, that could find its way in, how do we compare to other towns in terms of per pupil spending? Those kind of things, there's a whole host of things, you have to obviously be restrictive, but that's what I'm thinking. I don't know if that helps, but.
No, it does, thank you. No, but I think you touched upon some of the concerns, whether this is something that you're thinking about using as a goal for upcoming years, as opposed, okay. But yes, thank you very much, that is helpful.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Fenley?
Please, after you.
I called you first. Rob, it's real.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I was trying to give him the floor, excuse me. I just had one quick question about district improvement goal number two, and you may have touched on this. I was writing some notes, so I apologize if I missed it, but have you given any thought to sort of how the makeup of that council might, like, would folks volunteer? Would they be appointed? Do you have a set number? I was just curious if you had given any sort of additional thought to the, how the committee would be. would be comprised?
Yes, thank you. No, good question. I, I was thinking more volunteer, I wasn't thinking appointed, but I was certainly thinking along, along the lines of trying to be very inclusive. So hopefully, the gentle nudge of let's, PTOs represented, you know, the idea is to have one from each one, you know, kind of thing, or at least somebody that can maybe not be static for the year, but have somebody or a couple of people committed to, to being present for the meetings, so that the thought would be to, to lay out the meeting calendar for the year and the ideal group if, or, yeah, group who, that would be represented. So-
Sure, thank you. I don't know if I'm, if I'm jumping ahead to the, just the, to the revised rubric. I don't know if, if other committee members have had a chance to look at it. I, I looked at it, and I won't say I looked at it in depth, but I think that the streamlined aspect of it, where you're, you're really dropping a lot of this really wordy indicator language to something that's, I think, much more appropriate for a body like this. I think that, I mean, I think that it would be my, it's my opinion that we should go ahead with the revised one. I don't know if that's something that we need to vote on, or how we go about doing that, or do we just agree that this is what we want to do, or, or not?
You're looking at me? I, I think that, I don't think we need to, I think, I think it's a discussion, and I think we have to make that decision. I don't know if we have to make it right now, but I do think that at some point, and probably in the next few meetings, we probably should decide whether or not we want to go ahead with this, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, I think that would be fair.
So, thank you. Mrs. Burns?
Just a clarification, it is, it is your recommendation that you would like to go by these rubrics for this year's evaluation?
I would be very open to it if you, certainly if you, if you, and if you chose not to, that's fine, too, certainly, but if you, if you'd like, sure, certainly.
Would we join the rubric pilot that they have for this, or would we just do it on our own?
I don't, I'm not certain, but I don't think there's a requirement to join. I, I will say, I did reach out to MASC to just get a copy of the presentation, and I was in discussion with Dorothy Presser via email, and not only in her email to me did she say that anyone is welcome to use it, that was also an item that was included, I think, in the July or August MASC newsletter that comes out. I had a copy, and so she stated the same thing, and that is, I don't think there's a, I can double-check on that. I don't think you need to take a vote, and I don't think we need to join the pilot, but I'll double-check.
Okay. It's interesting, looking at the rubric and comparing it to the Summit of Eval report. And so, so last year, when we went, when we did the report, so curriculum says, I'm not, so I'm looking at the final report, but I'm looking at standard one instructional leadership. And so it, here's what we used. Curriculum ensures that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards-based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. And so it looks like it's a combination of needs improvement and proficient, like they've taken the language, and now they've broken it down into needs improvement and proficient, and then they have this, this piece wasn't included, right? So the exemplary is empowers administrators to ensure all instructional staff collaboratively plan, adapt as needed. So I think we, so we kind of, I guess, in our minds, use this as proficient. So if you were doing this, then it meant you were proficient, and so they've sort of broken this down into different categories. So I don't, it's not, so I don't think it's totally different, I just, but I also, I feel like I'm going to need different types of evidence to now see it in these blocks. I'm like, how am I going to know if the administrators are in power? So what am I going to, how am I going to measure that? I think, so I think it's something for us to definitely-
And I do, that you make, you, I don't think I mentioned in my memo, but there is supposed to be a complimentary document coming out, I think, on evidence. I don't know if it's out yet. It wasn't when I last was in correspondence with MASC, so that you do raise a good point. Yeah, I can check on that, too.
And so if I'm looking at your, so this would be under this first one, right? So let me just go to instructional leadership. You have observations and feedback, but then I have to evaluate curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, data, informed decision-making, that's a lot. How am I going to do that with that? So I guess we just need to make sure that we have the information we need, so that when we get to the table and start doing this, that I can say, oh, we have this evidence, we have this evidence, we have this evidence. Does that make sense? Mr. Rexton?
One of the things I think that, that I appreciate about this revised rubric is a, a recognition that it's harder for school committees to get insight into certain aspects of the superintendent's job than others, and that the evaluation should, you know, focus on things that we can, you know, have reliable evidence about and that we can see and properly evaluate, and that also, not only does that make our job of evaluating what we're competent to evaluate easier, but it also makes superintendent's job easier in terms of providing the kind of evidence that we can use to conduct that evaluation. You know, we're not flies on the wall in the day-to-day running of the, of the office, and so it's hard to kind of show how pieces of that work, and I think that the recognition of, of that in this rubric is a, is a, is a good step forward.
I, I will say, actually, you, you almost, you captured that very similarly to the words that Ms. Presser used around what she saw as the, it's almost like you were talking to her, were you?
Without us?
Just running on parallel minds.
So I would recommend, I would recommend, moving forward, that we probably keep this with us, and so that as Dr. Brand brings, so there's updates, we can then kind of look through this, just to make sure, so we don't get to the end and say, oh, no, we don't, I don't know, I need more evidence here, I need, and it can sort of be an ongoing conver, really good discussion, I think, throughout the year, as opposed to waiting to the end and then saying, oh, I hadn't thought about that, can we, you know? So I think, I think it's going to be helpful for us, but I would say, let's kind of keep it with us and-
Be helpful for facing any of the evidence supplied, as per my goal of, you know, student learning.
Right.
This is, you know, this can go towards that, you know, just kind of to help, so we don't, because I'll, I don't want to get lost in the discussion of the element and, and the progress, and just say, oh, yeah, that goes to this, and it, sometimes, you never know, it also falls into the other, can be used depending, there's other evidence and other, other goals as well. So, I mean, as I said, it can overlap each other at certain intervals, so.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Rexton?
I appreciate the, I think, the extra sort of color we got around, it's kind of the, the text of the, of the goals as they're, as they're currently written. And I, I would hope that they can, that a little bit of that additional detail that you presented to us can make it into some of the, the text of the goals, under the professional practice goal, you know, and the, right now, it just talks about deepen your understanding of the work of the school system, and when you were fleshing that out, I got a, had a much better sense of what you were really aiming to achieve here, identifying themes for growth within the faculty meetings, making sure that that time is being used effectively, and that the strategic plan is being discussed and implemented and so forth. And, and I think similarly about the student learning goal, that I have a much better sense from your description of what the intention, what the, sort of the work product of this, of this committee is going to be. And, and I think if, if some of that can make it into the text of the goal, then that will make it easier for us to, you know, evaluate and really see the progress, the progress toward that.
I appreciate that feedback, and I will, I'll rework these, also thinking about sort of some action steps and possible indicators, you know, of success, something along those lines, so I'll try and flush that out more. Thank you for the feedback.
That'd be, that'd be terrific. And, and I also, I think that it would be great for us to sort of regularly plan to get just updates on these goals, because that also, I think, would help us, I mean, not necessarily on like a fixed schedule, but just that as part of, you know, our meetings that, you know, on the agenda, we get, you know, periodic updates about, you know, what were some of the common, you know, for example, the superintendent council, you know, have there been any common concerns that have been, you know, if that's, if that's meeting monthly, then, you know, maybe three or four meetings in, you know, before the end of the, the winter break, we get a sense of, you know, what, what fruit has that, have those meetings borne, like, you know, what, what insights have we gotten?
I would add just to that, that I think that it would be important and helpful for both myself, obviously, and for use of the body to, perhaps at the next meeting. Also, though, take a look at the timeline, you know, for which, or around which this is going to happen. I know there was some discussion, of course, last year around who participates in that, but it certainly would be helpful as well for me, to be honest, too, to have a sense of where we're going. I think I did a mid-year check-in last year. Perhaps more might be desired, but actually plot those into our agendas, both just so that you, as a committee, knows what's, know what's coming, so too do I, and also so we can balance the agendas as we start to get into the real busy time of the year, so.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to number seven, public comment. Are you here for public comment? Anybody, anybody, anybody? Okay. Other reports, some, any subcommittee reports?
I know at our last meeting back in June, I was going to look into how other school committees use their budget, they have, they usually have a budget subcommittee, and talked to a couple of people, and, and basically, it's, it comes down, basically what they do is they have a group that meets with the, the administrator to really kind of focus on, you know, the budget, and if there are any questions with the budget, any nuances, or anything disappearing, that they also ask as a, act as a conduit to other committee members who may have questions on the budget and seeking that, so that they kind of speak to the budget and not just the, you know, the financial administrator. But that's basically how it's utilized, and I think, you know, it's a half a dozen of one, half a dozen the other. I mean, Paul is available, and I think the only, the only benefit that I see is that sometimes we all, a couple of us may have similar questions, where some, you know, but Paul, as he has said, has always availed himself to any questions. It just acts as a, just like a tag team in discussing budgetary concerns, where the changes come, where the focus is, and, but it, it really is up to the way of the board if they want to go that way. There's nothing, nothing poor to be gained from that, but the only thing that I would be concerned is, I've seen this man now for eight years at, you know, as a madman during budget season, and I'd hate to have to, you know, take that much time away from him, you know, to meet with a group in coordinating schedules, if it's, if it, you know, if it works well the way it, it always has. So I just throw that out to you.
So this was something from the retreat. We did talk about a budget subcommittee, and I don't know if anyone has given that more thought. When I was reading through the minutes, I said, oh, yeah, that's right, we did talk about that. That might be really great. Any thoughts or interest in participating in something like that?
I just, I don't know, I don't, I really don't know if we have a-
Why don't I let you think on that? And we'll, Mr. Rexton?
I mean, I, I think, when I think about a budget subcommittee, I'm thinking like, well, I guess I might get some benefit out of being on that in terms of like learning more about the budget and being able to have a, a deeper appreciation for the, for the process. But if, but what benefit does it provide the committee, and what reports is that that's what they're going to bring back to the committee? I mean, other than just getting more detailed information to the people who are, you know, on the, on it, you know, then how does that, how does that information then get back to the committee? And can it get back in a more effective way than already when we have Dr. Brand and Mr. Rosero telling us about it, since they're the experts to begin with? So, since we can't all be on the subcommittee, I'm not sure if it would serve the traditional purpose of a subcommittee in terms of doing some of the work that then benefits the entire committee and has something to kind of come back and share with them.
And Mr. Rosero's always availed himself to sit down with anybody and trying to explain and get a better understanding of, of the budgetary process and, and the accounts, which, I mean, I'm, I have a better understanding than when I first started, but, you know, I, and I think maybe as we progress, I think, learning how we're looking, how the superintendent and Mr. Rosero are putting together the budget and what your priorities are district-wide, long-term and short-term, I think, I think it's best suited as a collective body. I mean, I think, I don't, I think we do, we can do it.
I think, I mean, I think, so I'll, I'll report a little bit on the policy subcommittee in just a second, but I think when we look at the budget, and it's a budget subcommittee, it would be sort of looking at it in a, maybe in a deeper way, and sort of, is this aligning with our strategic plan? Like, that might not be something we're doing right here, and not that, but I think if a small group of three are doing some of that work and sort of saying, oh, does this line up, are we, I mean, I think it's, it'll be new and it'll take time, and I don't think it's going to happen right away, but then to come back and say, here's what we discussed, what are your thoughts on that as a whole group? I just think it's, some of those discussions might not be able to happen in here at this time, but might serve the larger committee well if there were a few people doing some of that work, just as though, just as David and Steve and I are going through the policy book, and we're kind of, so we're going to, we're doing the work, and then we're going to bring it to you to get your feedback and your approval and go from there. So I think it serves the same purpose in that way, just, I think it's rethinking budget. I think, that's how I think of it a little bit, like rethinking what it means to look at the budget. I mean, I think it was your, wasn't it your idea?
Well, yes, well, I, no, it was, I brought it for, no, I did, I brought it for, but, you know, but I, but in talking to a variety of different people with how they utilize the subcommittee, and my other concern, though, too, is that, you know, it's time. Who's going to serve? You know, is, do we create another subcommittee and then try, difficulty in trying to get people at the meetings, because I, you know, again, my biggest concern is during the budgetary season, and it's, we're not losing out, I mean, Paul's still accessible to us with any questions with regards to the budget, you know? I, I think that this, you know, as we go on, maybe we can think about this further, if, if we can come up with a clear definition about how we could use this, but we don't have to use it like other committees have, but if we can find a viable way even to bridge with this strategic plan, as you said, you know, I think, you know, I think that's a great lead, and it's, what will that look like?
Right. Mr. Rexton?
I think that the way that you were framing it before about looking at the, you know, the budget in terms of, does it align with strategic plan and so forth, I think if we do something like this, that, that has to be the way that we approach it, that there needs to be like a real goal and intention that we're creating this to, you know, to, to accomplish, rather than just, well, here, we have a, now we have a budget subcommittee, and, okay, I guess they'll just have a meeting and talk about the budget, and, you know, we have to have a real sense of what, what we think that this will accomplish and how we want to set this up to better serve the process than what we're doing now, if we think it will better serve us, and have a real clear idea of what we intend that committee to, to do and accomplish.
I agree. Okay. So everyone's going to draft a vision and a mission through next, through September 11th. No, I think, just think on it, and then maybe we can kind of, kind of come back to this at the end of our next meeting and see if people are interested in, in serving in that role. Okay. And just a quick update, so David, Steve, and I met over the summer, and we started going through the policy, so we are, we're chugging along, and we had our first, so we met, we decided to break them up and do revisions based on MASC's policy handbook, so we were kind of taking our sections and then looking at MASC and making the revisions necessary. Tonight, we met and reviewed each other, so I got to see David's, and he got to see mine, and Dr. Regan and Dr. Brand were there to, to help us with some of those pieces. That will then come back to you at the next meeting, and you'll see some of those changes, and we'll have to then formally either adopt them or wait and make more changes, but for the most part, right now, we're kind of just making, we're updating it to match what it should be. And then, and then I think there are other things that will come out of it as we move along and say, is this something that's important to us, what do we want to do? But right now, it's sort of just making sure that we're up to date. And so we're, we're moving along, and we plan on meeting, it sounds, we're going to do a lot of the work at home, but then we'll meet prior to each school committee meeting, about forty-five minutes prior to each school committee meeting, for a while, until we feel as though we've really gotten quite a, there's a lot of them, so, as you know. But we're pretty committed to getting, I mean, usually it's a three-year cycle, it takes three years, so, but our hope is to get through quite a bit of it this year, just to make sure things are updated. Do you want to add anything?
Just that we're, you know, to some extent, kind of just starting at the beginning and working through, but we're also going to look ahead and pull out ones that are more important and that, you know, need, need updating or just, you know, more significant pieces of policy, and making sure that those have a higher priority than just what happens to be next in the alphabet.
Okay. Any other subcommittee reports? Subcommittee you want to create? That I did, in reading the retreat notes, I did notice that we were supposed to call together the Family, Community, Engagement, Relations Committee. The policy, I think, is a priority right now, and so I didn't call that meeting, but, but look for something if you're on that committee, there'll be something coming out in the next few weeks to schedule something so we can gain some traction on that. Okay? All right. You have anything else?
I don't.
Anybody else? All right, then we need one final motion. All right, then we need one final motion. Mr. Fenely?
To move.
To do what?
What are you moving?
What are you moving?
It's the last motion we always make.
Seconded by Mr. Rexdale, all in favor? Thanks, everybody. Good night.